Welcome everyone to tonight's, tonight's meeting of Greenville City Council. Thank you for joining us. Please rise for invocation by Councilmember DeWorke and followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please bow our heads. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful South Carolina day. Thank you for all the guests that are joining us today. Please help guide this council and leadership throughout this community and allow us to do the people's work as best we can. It's in your son's name, Your Prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance. Board will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brazington. Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of October 11th, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections. Seeing none, they are so approved. We have a few folks who signed up to speak to council. You're invited to say what you'd like to say, just be mindful of the three-minute rule. How do we do the three minutes? Is there a clock up here? Okay, alrighty. Sally Wills? She'll give you her address and upfront please and happy to hear from you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me today. My name is Sally Wills. I live at 213 Fremont Drive. I'm here representing Livwell Greenville, a coalition that works towards equitable access to healthy foods and physical activity opportunities throughout Greenville County, as well as Greenville County's Food Security Coalition. We are a partner, a partnership that is just working across the entire country to really address, or across the entire county, sorry, we're not that big yet. Across the entire county to work on equitable access to physical activity and healthy foods throughout the community. I'm here to thank you for your consideration of the business license tax incentive for grocery stores in special emphasis neighborhoods. We've been doing a lot of work in this space, particularly with our special emphasis neighborhoods. What we know with our work with Furman University and our data that we've collected is that many of our neighborhoods, particularly the special emphasis neighborhoods, are experiencing food insecurity, meaning that people don't have regular access to not only food in general, but especially healthy foods. And by that, we're particularly talking about fresh produce, lean proteins, the foods that our bodies need to survive and to thrive. We know that it is harder for neighborhood residents in those special emphasis neighborhoods to gain access to those healthy foods in an affordable and safe way, particularly when transportation is an issue. We hope that you will consider this proposal and think about the impacts that it will have in those neighborhoods. We have seen success with similar challenges in several cities, including New Orleans, in Louisiana, Birmingham, Alabama, and Baltimore, Maryland. Have implemented similar creative policies with business license tax incentives and have increased that access to healthy foods. I'll thank you for the time and I thank you for the consideration and I'll be glad to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do, Sally.
Oh, sorry, yes.
No, thank you for what you do.
Oh, thank you, Russell.
And for Livwell.
Katie Smith? With everybody in the mask.
I thought Livwell.
I thought you were sitting out there. That wasn't you. That was.
How about my Wake Forest colors?
Do. You're right.
I'm Katie Smith. I live at 31 Riverside Drive and I am here to speak in favor of the same thing as Sally. I moved here in 1995, bought a tiny little house on Augusta Court. One of the first neighborhood events I went to was an election event for you, Mayor Knox White. At that time, it was very interesting. So much has changed. There were four grocery stores that were near my house at that time. The Baby Bylo on Augusta, the Bylo on Pleasantburg and Ferris, the Bylo on Malden and Pleasantburg, and the Harris Teeter where the GB Shoes is now. Lots of options. None of those are still there. New grocery stores have come to affluent areas. Lots of grocery stores have been lost in other areas. So I just want to speak in favor of the same thing as a part of the business license opportunity. Seven of Greenville's 13 special emphasis neighborhoods are rated by USDA as having low food access because they are too far from a grocery store to walk and they have low car ownership. So I was really excited to see this included and that it also excludes those stores that aren't really predominantly grocery stores, but do sell food. So thanks for considering this and I hope it remains included as this proposal goes forward. Appreciate the time.
Raises good issue. I did want to say we're also actively in discussions with grocery store chains about coming into the city and where they might go. We have at least one that's showing a little bit of promise, so we'll keep at it.
Thank you.
Just real quick, I support the message, Katie, but since Wake Forest just beat my alma mater 76.
So sorry.
But it was so hard. Good gracious.
Well, we were cheering with our next door neighbor who are West Point folks also, so we tried to bond a little bit over that. Exactly, exactly.
That was wonderful ages. Travis Paul?
Hi, good evening. My name is Travis Paul at 406 Townsend Avenue and I'm here with the M. Peters Group. We're a developer. We're the owner of the Plush Mill site across from St. Francis and we are actively, maybe aggressively pursuing different national change for supermarkets. So we just see it's really important as us as a developer, if you don't know who we are, we're doing multifamily, we do market rate, we do affordable housing. And if we look at that area where we're looking in West Greenville across from St. Francis, you know, there's not a grocery store for close to three miles. So if you're there, you're taking a 40-minute bus trip out to White Horse Road where you have a couple of options. You know, but I think it's important as we start to look at that, that really from Greenville, when you look at Greenville West out to really the Pickens Line, south to 85, north to Furman, that's all a food desert. So that's defined as people who have low income, do not have affordable transportation, and are more than a mile from a grocery store. Along with that, the demand for affordable housing in that neighborhood is significant. So if you look in that, that West Greenville area, there's a net demand of 2,100 apartments for affordable housing. Greenville County is closer to 15,000 apartments. So any sort of stimulus or incentive like this just helps. So as we're talking to these national supermarkets, we're able to talk in and talk about all the great things that Greenville has, we're able to talk about how the city supports them through incentives is significant. So I just want to say thank you and in full support.
Yeah, thank you. And thank y'all. Keep at it too. That's, that's the opportunity, I think.
Yep, thank you.
We get it. Thank you. Shelby's here. Shelby Dodson? See, I thought you were Katie. I could see you through there, but you.
Hey, I'm Shelby Dodson, also speaking in favor of the business license incentives for the, for the grocery stores and the food deserts. And I think it's great. I've been a broker with CBRE for about 12 years now. I've also been engaged on the Plush Mill site and I live two blocks from there on the west end, right off Pendleton Street, and have been just trying so hard for many years now to get a grocery store on the west end and it's been challenging for a number of reasons. But now that the, the density is up and the new census data is out and everybody's recognized the issue, I think it's a great opportunity and appreciate what y'all are doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Were you here? Yvonne Reader? Oh, I didn't, I didn't think you were here because I didn't, you were hiding behind Matt, between Matt and Earl over there. Okay.
Good evening. My name's Yvonne Reader. I live at 10 Zero Street, Greenville, South Carolina, 29607. I grew up in Nickel Town in the 50s and 60s where we had a self-sustaining neighborhood. We had several grocery stores. We had our own gas station, our own park, our own school, bunches of churches. We had everything. We didn't really have to leave the neighborhood for anything we needed. But those days have changed. And now in Nickel Town with 36.7% of its residents, that's over 21%, is over 62 years old. And in Sterling Community, 28.3% are over 62 years old. And we have several other of our special emphasis neighborhoods that have a large majority of elderly people living there. So when you're elderly and you don't have a grocery store to go get your groceries, it's hard enough to get somebody to just come visit you. So you can't get them to go to the grocery store for you. And we really need to have grocery stores in those communities. Even if they're not the great big ones, even Walmart has come up with what they call the neighborhood grocery store. So I'd like to, I agree with the proposal that we have some type of incentive to get these stores to come into the neighborhoods because it is really, really needed. Once you get old where you can't drive at night, you can't go places, it's tough. And you gotta eat to stay healthy. So I'm going to ask you to please vote positive for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Yvonne. We have a number of recognitions and appointments tonight for our boards and commissions. And this will be, this will be the city council show tonight as they proceed to make these recognitions according to this schedule here. I think the first folks are those who've served and we're giving appreciation to. Okay. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Brazington.
Yeah, that's me. I'm real pleased tonight before council and those in person here in the room, as well as any watching live to recognize my friend Bruce Wise. Bruce Wise, who I don't think is here, to the mayor's point, it's hard to see from up here, but Bruce has served with distinction for a couple of years now on the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee since I think the fall of 2019. But Bruce, we just want to, even in your absence, thank you and express our appreciation for your service to the city's boards and commissions. Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you. Firefighters pension fund?
Is Eric Pickard here? Eric has served on the Firefighters Pension Fund Board of Trustees since November 25 of 2013, eight years. He is an attorney in Greenville, works at Oger Tridinkins where he specializes in pension plans, ERISA benefits, all those different things. And for the past eight years, he has graciously provided those services to the city of Greenville free of charge. He has been a valuable member of that board. Unfortunately, he is at a point where he can't go on again, but we want to thank him for his service and we hope that, that he will look to join another board in the future.
The Richland Cemetery Advisory Board?
Yes, I'm excited to recognize William O'Neill. I know he's not, not feeling well, so he's not here tonight. But Mr. O'Neill, his last term began October the 1st, 2020, and he had to resign due to his illness. And we want to appreciate him for his service on, as long ago as the Friends of Richland Cemetery, now the Richland Cemetery Advisory Committee. And we thank him for that service.
The Green Ribbon Advisory Committee?
Yes, so I have the privilege of thanking Aaron Barr for his longtime service since October 1st of 2015 on the Green Ribbon Advisory Committee, finally known as GRAC. Aaron, I think we all have had a very great relationship and benefited from the knowledge that Aaron holds and the passion that he holds for this area expertise. He served as chair and he was even a speaker at our retreat in 2020, giving us some ideas for, for our work on sustainability. So he will be greatly missed and I'm grateful to him for his service.
Thank you. Greenville Housing Authority, Councilman Stahl?
I think we have one here. First of all, we need to thank John Good. He's served since October of 2011. Diane Keller, who's here, served since October 22nd. And Diane has also been so integral in so many other parts of this city. So thank you for your service and we look forward to continue working with you. And then finally, Janie Davis, who served since October 26, 2020.
Okay, thank you. SC TAC?
Thank, thank, oh, sorry. You ready for me?
Yep.
Jumping the gun here. What do you say? Ann Ellison is rotating off of SC TAC. What do you say about Ann Ellison? I mean, what a, what a leader in this community. She's been with Prisma for a number of years. She was with Haynesworth. She was the president of the bar. She had. of the bar. She is just such an awesome leader that we've had. We will surely miss her. She was actually my chair at the Greenville Chamber when I was there, mayor at one point.
Really?
Yeah, she's fantastic. So we just want to say our appreciation to Ann.
You were just a young little thing there.
I wasn't young.
Speaking of young, young people, Youth Commission, we have a few folks who are rotating
off. We always appreciate their service. Hughes Clark, Benjamin Bryson, Samuel Elliott Dobson, Casey Livers, and Nicholas Ian McGee, excuse me. Appreciate their service. Thank any of them here tonight. We have some new appointments to be made tonight also. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Dow.
ATAX. Yes. So tonight I recommend the appointment of Bill Groves. He's currently serving on there. We appointed him within the last year for an unexpired term. So we'd like to recommend reappointment. He is with the Embassy Suites on Verde. We also have a newcomer that we'd like to recommend, Joshua Riley. Joshua is the COO of Sully Steamers. He is fantastic, enthusiastic, and really, really impressed us in the interview and very excited for him to be a hospitality rep on ATAX. So recommending him for a full two-year term. Both of those will begin November 1 and end October 31, 2023. And I'd also like to recommend, this is from Panel A, by the way, the appointment of Mary Hip. She's representing the Metropolitan Arts Council to a one-year term beginning November 1, 2021. We're all familiar with Mary, and that will end on October 31, 2022.
Okay, we have the nominations of Bill Groves, Joshua Riley, and Mary Hip. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor of these, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So named. Firefighter Pension Fund, Councilmember Fleming.
I'd like to recommend the appointment of Sherri Turner to a full four-year term beginning November 1, 2021 and ending October 31, 2025.
Okay, Ms. Sherri Turner is so named. Any of the nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She is so named. Greenville Transit Authority, Councilmember Brazington.
I'd like to recommend for appointment Walker Smith to a three-year term of service beginning, let's see, November the 1st, 2021 and expiring on October 31, 2024.
Okay, the appointment of Walker Smith. Any of the nominations? If not, all in favor of Mr. Smith, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
I'm going to vote for Mrs. Smith.
Miss Smith.
Miss Smith. Oh, yeah, that's Walker Smith. Oh, yeah. She got time to do all this after her new role? Okay.
She's doing a great, she's doing a great job.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The Walker Smith, yeah. Municipal Election Commission, Councilman Brazington, you're also on.
Me as well. I'm pleased to recommend for appointment Jessica Sharp. I had to double-check this for a full whopping six-year term of the Municipal Election Commission. And the math works here. That's November 1, 2021 through October 31, 2027.
That's right, six years. Camilla's shaking her head, yes, that's right. Okay. Okay, Ms. Sharp is so named. Any of the nominations? If so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sharp, so named for six years. Richland Cemetery Advisory Committee, Councilmember Fleming.
And as we noticed, my friends at Richland now have become the Richland Cemetery Advisory Committee. And I'd like to nominate the following four people for full two-year terms. Michelle Simmons, Pamela Sims, Sam Zimmerman, Kayla Sullivan. And their particular terms will begin November 1, 2021, and they will end October 31, 2023.
Recommend the next one, too.
Okay. Okay, I also want to recommend Jenny Lamont. Let me see, is anybody?
Unexpired term.
Okay, Jenny Lamont. She is filling the unexpired term. If you notice, I just recommended or just recognized Mr. William O'Neill, who had to leave, and she is completing his unexpired term that will end October 31, 2022.
Okay, those nominations are made. Any other nominations? All in favor, DCI?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so named. Community Development Advisory Committee, that's a mayoral appointment. I'm reappointing Kevin Mertens and Scott May to a full two-year term beginning November 2021 through October 2023. Board of Zoning Appeals, Councilman DeWorke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I proudly recommend the appointment of Chris Patel and Seth Wunder to a full three-year term each beginning November 1 of this year, ending October 31, 2024. We both, we all know, I think, both of those people and they'll do a fine job representing us.
Okay, any other nominations for Board of Zoning Appeals? If not, all in favor of these, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Green Ribbon Advisory Committee, Councilman Stahl.
And these will be for two-year terms. I'm recommending the appointment of Mary Elza Walsh, Stephanie McCauley, and Jody Price Hojse to a full two-year term beginning November 1, 2021 and ending October 31, 2023.
Okay, those are the nominations. Any others? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These so named. Greenville Housing Authority, I'm appointing, as a mayoral appointee, I'm appointing Katina Abercrombie to a full five-year term beginning November 2021 and ending in October 2026. Councilman Gibson, you get a nominee.
It is my great pleasure to recommend the appointment of Erica Reyes and Raquel Collier to a full five-year term each beginning November 1, 2021 and ending October 31, 2026. Had the great pleasure of interviewing both of these ladies and they are going to be outstanding on this, on the Housing Authority.
Okay. Does that give us a full complement of Housing Authority members?
I think so.
Or no? Yeah. All filled now? Okay. Those nominations are made. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They're so named. Public Safety Citizen Review Board, Councilman Gibson.
It is also my great pleasure to recommend the appointment, really reappointment, Dolores Dorum to a full four-year term beginning November 1, 2021 and ending October 31, 2025. Dolores has served extremely well on the, on this board for the last four years with a great deal of change. I think she will do a fantastic job going forward as well.
Okay, this term is nominated. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. SC TAC, Councilman Stahl.
Yes, I'm recommending the appointment of James McKissick to a full three-year term beginning November 1, 2021 and ending October 31, 2024.
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor of Mr. McKissick, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Councilman DeWorke, Arts and Public Places.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very excited about this nomination for Byron Jeffries to serve in Arts and Public Places. But he's an architect with the Johnston Design Group, also with the active member of the National Organization of Minority Architects. But with all those great credentials, Will Brazington, his greatest asset is he is a two-time graduate of Clemson University. I would, I would recommend him to council.
He's awesome.
Sometimes council members go off script, but if you insist.
They had such a renowned art department.
If you insist. That nomination, Mr. Jeffries, all, any other nominations? If not, all in favor of Ms. Jeffries, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? He is so named, too. The Greenville Health Authority Board of Trustees, the Greenville County Legislative Delegation has selected Dr. Bradley Williams for an at-large position to the GHAB Board as a resident of the city of Greenville. And in accordance with Act 102 of 2015, the Legislative Delegation is requesting concurrence from Greenville City Council.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before we completely move on, unless my eyes fail me and there's a good chance of that, I think Jenny Lamontay has joined us.
Jenny Lamont. I couldn't help it. It's her through her mask.
So, yeah, Councilmember Fleming just obviously recommended her appointment, but we wanted to thank you and recognize you, appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
So you come all the way down here tonight, at least you get a standing applause from the city council. So thank you.
It's going to be a great asset. There's a whole lot of information that she can bring to us and help us get things straightened out.
Welcome to a Krispy Kreme doughnut when you leave here tonight.
And I'd also like to thank Camilla Pittman and the liaisons. This was a lot of appointments and a lot of interviews that were done fairly quickly, arranged very quickly. And the quality of nominees we had was absolute, the best I've seen since I've been on council. And the process worked very smoothly. So Camilla, thank you for making our job easier.
Panel A's still killing it, Russell. Still killing it on Panel A.
Got it. We have one item on the consent agenda. If there's, with that, we'll proceed to a vote on the consent agenda item.
Second.
Camilla, catch up with me. Oh, Latory, I'm sorry.
She's busy keeping notes on the comment I just made.
Item 11A. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. So, beside and receive, second and final reading. Regular Agenda New Business 15A, first reading.
Ordinance to appropriate $31,926 in the miscellaneous grant fund for the FY 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program.
Have motion, please.
So move.
Second. Motion second. Do you want to hear from the chief on this? You want to come up, chief? And anytime you get some, some funding like this, you might want to say a word, I guess.
Yeah, let's brag about it.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this would help us continue our Gravity Program, which is our gang resistance and violence targeting youth. And it will help fund our mentoring and our canceling. We, our counselor is, and many of you probably know her, Dr. Caroline Caldwell-Richman, and does a fantastic job. She's been with us since we, this inception of this project.
Okay, questions? Thank you very much. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15A receives. First reading, 15B.
Ordinance providing the issuance and sale of waterwork system, refunding and/or improvement revenue bonds of the city of Greenville in one or more series, the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding $175,555,000 and other matters relating thereto.
Have motion second. Motion second. Matt, do you want, you're up there, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if there are any questions tonight, someone you all are probably familiar with, Phil Robey, the CFO of Greenville Water is here. These are Greenville Water Bonds, so they are not debt instruments of the city and we do not have any financial impact. But if there are any questions, Mr. Robey is here for you.
Okay. Nice to have Mr. Robey with us tonight. Okay, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Abstain. 15C.
Ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Greenville to provide for certain economic development stimulus incentives and matters related thereto.
Motion, please.
Second.
Motion second. Clerk Colerole.
I want to say one thing. If we ever had any hesitancy, if you want people to pay attention to something in the packet, put it in red, such as grocery stores in the incentives list. I had 10 phone calls today.
15C.
Thanking us for adding that. So I just, you know, I'm so excited for it. I think it's a great tool for us to add to our toolkit to incentivize this.
Right, sends a good signal. And as we go out and recruit grocery stores, it's just a good door opener, if you will. It's a good thing to have. So we really mean it. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15D.
Ordinance amending Chapter 8 pertaining to business license, tax, and other business regulations, and Chapter 48 pertaining to vehicles for hire of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Greenville and matters related thereto.
Motion second, though. Motion?
So move.
Go move.
Motion second. Okay, I know Councilman DeWorke wants to make a comment. Do you want to let Matt speak first? Okay, Matt, you go ahead. Very important, Matt.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's our pleasure to be here tonight to present the ordinances for the economic development incentives and for the updates of Chapter 8 and 48 of the city code. If you can pull up the presentation, Michael. So we reviewed much of this information in work session, so I'll go through a pretty rapid recap. But this is being driven by a state law change, the Business License Standardization Act. And so the purpose behind these actions tonight is to bring the city into compliance with the Business License Standardization Act. The bulk of the action that you all will be taking is to adopt a form of the Municipal Association Model Ordinance that's applicable to the city of Greenville. As we were doing the repeal and replace of our existing business license ordinance, there were several items of housekeeping, things that were previously addressed through our business license ordinance that needed to be addressed in another part of city code. So the amendments to Chapter 48, which is motor vehicles, most of those items were previously regulated in the business license ordinance. And since the new, the new business license ordinance doesn't speak to those, they needed to be addressed somewhere else in city code. So the significant changes driven by the Business License Standardization Act include the following: a statewide renewal date of April 30. You all may recall that our existing renewal date is the end of February, so that's a change for our customers. A standardized statewide definition of gross income, a standardized application. So if you're a customer in the city of Greenville, you can use a statewide application or you can use the city of Greenville's application. We accept either. Standardized business classes on a federal-based system, the North American Industry Classification System. That's a significant change for us. We've moved from a bespoke model that the city had for classification to a statewide model. It establishes a state-run online renewal portal. Again, our customers have multiple options. They can use the state portal or they can use the city's portal, or they can renew traditionally through our in-person application. And then a standardized appeals process. So every city in South Carolina and every county that does a business license is being required to come into compliance with those. So on the next slide, what do we need to do? So the step that we're discussing tonight is the repeal and replacement of our existing business license ordinance. We have to reclassify all our businesses to a standardized class schedule. We've done that and we, and I'll go through briefly what that looks like for us. Rebalancing the rate structure to prevent a windfall. So what that means is under our new rate structure that's being driven by state law, we can't generate a increase in revenues based on what the businesses were classified as in 2019. And we have to adopt and move forward with this new business license ordinance by the end of the calendar year. So the bottom line here is we have, we've had to adopt an entirely new rate structure, keeping our revenue at or below where we collected in 2020, while completely changing the nature of how we've classified businesses in the past. I'm going to go forward a couple of slides to, what says, impact the city businesses, Michael? Thank you. So there are approximately 9,500 businesses that receive a business license in the city of Greenville. Based on our proposed rate schedule included in the ordinance, 85% of those, or approximately 8,100 businesses, will see lower business license fees than they did prior to this new ordinance. The average decrease will be over $200 for business and 60% of businesses that are seeing decreased fees will pay, will pay at least $100 less than they're paying prior to the option of this ordinance. On the reverse side of that, 1,400 businesses or about 15% of the licensed businesses in the city will pay more than they're paying now. But the vast majority of those will be increasing either less than 10% or less than $50. And so we've did, done many iterations of this to try to find a new rate structure that was fair and that addressed the most benefit to the most businesses. So you also, you all already voted on the first reading of the economic development incentives. Just briefly, why are we doing this? So our old economic development incentives that were business license related were no longer applicable with the adoption of a new ordinance. And so staff took this opportunity to work with economic development. And so, staff took this opportunity to work with economic development and, and try to find some new, um, new tools, new flexibility that, uh, we could adopt going forward. If you go to the next slide. So, the, the gist of these economic development incentives, this is a grant-based rebate, um, and so, there are a couple of tiers. So, the first is a new business rebate. So, it's a five-year, 100% rebate, um, for new businesses that include artists in the Central Business District, West End, and Village of West Greenville, retailers in the Central Business District and West End, manufacturing and corporate headquarters, businesses located anywhere in the city, grocery stores located in special emphasis neighborhoods, and any commercial business that's annexed into the city. The existing businesses in these targeted industries that are currently paying business license will also receive a 50% rebate of their fees for the next five years. In addition to that targeted, um, incentive proposal, we also have, um, some citywide incentives. So, any business that invests in the city and creates new jobs at or above the county's median per capita wage, and makes a capital investment of at least $500,000, will receive a business license incentive, um, and a permit fee rebate. And so, th- those are tiered, uh, based on your level of new job creation and capital investment, the maximum being, um, a 100% business license rebate for three years and a 100% rebate of any permit-related fees. And then, lastly, in our targeted priority investment areas, these are the significant business corridors in the city. Wade Hampton, Lawrence Pendleton, Pleasantburg, Haywood, Stone, and Augusta, which was added after the last meeting, um, for smaller-level job creation. So, as few as five jobs and a $250,000 capital investment, we'll be offering economic development incentives. So, that's the, um, that's the material we have prepared tonight. I do want to take just a moment to thank Mike Pitts and his team, Logan, Lee, and Tanya, for all their work on, uh, a full rewrite of our business license ordinance, the OMB team of, uh, Jody, Jeff, and Karen for all of their work, and Melissa Harrell and Eric Schittle at the Municipal Association for answering many, many questions. I'll open it to council.
Just want to make comment, this is an exercise that every municipality in South Carolina has, has undertaken. But I haven't seen any other municipality use it as an opportunity, as we have, to provide special economic development incentives, which I think is really commendable. So, a lot of these things have been around a long time, and we're expanding them. Um, I don't know anyone else doing that, and to provide actual tax reductions for so many people. So, we really appreciate the good staff work that's done on that, and kind of sort of bringing together the ideas that have been there a long time. But it, it really shows we mean business when we talk about promoting our, our corridors, like Wade Hampton and Stone and Augusta and all of those, and certainly special, special needs such as grocery stores in, uh, certain neighborhoods. So, I really thank y'all for that. And again, I don't see that happening around the state any, anyplace else, and so, that says a lot about our strong, uh, financial condition. Nonetheless, there are still a lot of changes here, and I know Councilman DeWerkin has some sensitive comments about how we should proceed from this day on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and Matt, thank you, to you and your team. This is a, this is a bear, that is for sure, and, uh, a lot to wrap your arms around. So, thank you for all that. Um, Mayor, after, um, council has an opportunity to make some comments or questions, if they have any, uh, I'd like to ask council to defer, uh, 15D, uh, for two weeks. And really, uh, nothing more than it's a lot to get your arms around. And, I mean, you've, Matt, you and your, you and your team have worked on this for a really long time, and, uh, it's a lot to get your arms around, a lot to digest, and it also will give an opportunity to the stakeholders out in the community to digest it as well. So, certainly, not an opposition from me, but just, uh, uh, a, uh, an ask of council to defer to two weeks so that we all can get our arms around it.
Is that a motion?
Oh, that, that can be a motion.
Can be a motion.
But.
A second.
You want to?
Then we have discussion, but well.
Yeah, second, no, discussion, yeah. Uh-huh. I think we had to talk about what kind, and how to spend that time well, in terms of getting the word out, and some, with, especially with some partners like the Chamber of Commerce and others.
And I might have some things to add to it.
Okay.
But I don't know if I can do that with his motion, can I?
Oh, well, depends.
Well, I, it depends. Couple of questions, Matt, and there's a couple of kind of fine-tuned questions, and then one maybe bigger thing. So, in the old system, were the business, were the, were the, were the renewals due February 1st or February 28th?
So, they were due, uh, by the end of February, so it, it's specified, uh, because of the leap year, it's not specified as a date.
But it's end of Feb, end of the month.
Um, but we offered a, uh, an incentive to businesses that paid, um, before February. So, if you paid in January, you, you got a discount. The new ordinance also includes that early payment discount.
So, if everybody played by the books and didn't take this, you know, they just did it by the deadline, we're going to see, uh, we have a ga- a two-month gap to where the old renewals have essentially expired, but April 30th haven't come. So, that's something we just absorb and reflect in those key financial indicators, or?
Yeah, so in terms of, in terms of cash flow, we, we will have a, a two-month push. But mind you, that time of the year is, is when we're particularly cash flush, because we've just collected property taxes. Um, and so, in terms of, um, business impacts of the cash flow negligible, we, you know, we won't be in a position where we need to issue revenue anticipation notes or anything like that. We can absorb that.
Okay.
Um, the ordinance language does extend currently, current active business licenses and, um, through the new renewal date. So, we won't have businesses that are unlicensed between February and April.
Okay. Somewhere in there, it said our revenues had to stay at or below revenues in 2020, which was not a good year, which was a year where we, you know, we, everything was willy-nilly in 2020. So, how's that affect us?
Revenue's collected in 2020 based on business gross revenue in 2019.
Okay.
So, the legislature set it at a pre-COVID level.
Okay. However, we did, I mean, we, we forgave any, uh, late payment, anything like that. I'm just making sure we're not getting a COVID. Gotcha on this.
No, the 2020 level is, is a good one for us.
Okay, the last thing I, I will add, um, and this is really something for council to consider, maybe some discussion, I don't know. But, um, you know, when you were up here before in the work session talking about it, and I asked, what could we, is there something we could do to get grocery stores incentivized? And you said, there is absolutely something we can, we can do, and you delivered with putting it in red on the presentation, which I greatly appreciate. A similar challenge that is becoming more and more prominent in not just our community, but all communities, and that is access to childcare. So, we know that the chamber, when they did their study a number of several years ago, that one of the key, um, barriers to workforce entry was access to childcare. That problem has not gotten any better, certainly not with COVID. And speaking as, as someone that once looked for childcare, in 1993, it was very hard to find childcare. It's still very hard to find childcare. I'm sure, Lillian, you can relate to it as well, and all the Mr. Moms up here. Councilmember DeWerkin is probably.
I need help caring for my children.
Right, right. All that to say is, since we're deferring for two, or since we, we might entertain a deferral for two weeks, if staff could advise, is there any wiggle room in there? Any tool to add to our toolkit to help incentivize childcare providers? I, I would see that as also a need that's becoming greater and greater for our community.
I concur. Will you make a recommendation?
To, to get in the weeds, um, Section 4875, when we're talking about taxis. Uh, I had an inquiry on whether or not that, uh, part of the requirement, I, I believe, is that taxis submit a business plan to the city manager. Is that correct?
I, can you answer that question? I'll have to defer to the city attorney.
But, uh, my, my inquiry, though, is does that apply to Uber? Does that apply to Uber drivers as well, and Lyft drivers as well? Will they be individually required to meet that requirement of reporting?
I don't believe so under state law. In fact, uh, most of the changes made to the taxi section were to lessen the amount of regulation to bring it more in line with, with Uber and Lyft.
Okay.
I have one, just one question. When we first, when the state municipal government, um, wanted to change this, et cetera, why, why are we keeping our, our application and theirs?
So, um, we, we were required to accept the, the model application statewide. Our application, um, if our businesses use that, has additional, um, data that we can use to feed into our economic development efforts, such as number of employees and things like that. It's not asked by the state. So, there's a benefit to us in terms of data gathering.
Okay.
Okay, we had a motion to defer. I could take that as unanimous consent to defer, but we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote on deferring.
Councilmember DeWerkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Matt, for outstanding report. Okay, Mr. Manager.
Got a couple of items, Mayor. Uh, before we get to, uh, what's going to be a really good presentation on Fall for Greenville, I want to recognize a couple of people. First, Clint, if you would stand up, I want to introduce our new Director of Public Works, Clint Lake. Uh, do you have it? He served as the interim Director of Engineering for, um, better part of a year, and competed for the Public Works Director position, and I'm happy to, uh, have him join the senior leadership team in that capacity. Also want to recognize Dave Derrick, who did a tremendous job. Um, I, I can't tell you how much work, Dave, under your leadership, has been done over the past year. Neighborhoods are looking better. A lot of, if you look at the weekend review, the, the amount of work that's going in to address neighborhood issues is really phenomenal. So, I want to thank you and.
Don't forget the statues.
We're lucky he's not going.
Don't forget the statues, Mr. Manager.
He's going to continue to serve as our Deputy Director of Public Works, so we get to keep both of these guys. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, Angie, you want to come up and give us an update on Fall for Greenville and Cheryl, the great news?
So, yeah, at the last, um, council meeting, we were a little dragging, so couldn't, um, didn't make it here to give you an update. I'd like to, um, provide a brief summary of the Bank of America Fall for Greenville. It was a banner year for us. A lot of you actually attended, and we appreciate that. We, we love seeing our councilmembers, um, at our events. Next slide, is it Michael? First of all, it's important to say that Greenville was ready to, to be back on the streets. While we've had some other events, um, we heard time and time again, we're ready. So, canceled events, controlled access, pods, virtual entertainment, no-touch transactions, um, all of that was going on for the last year and a half. And the Fall for Greenville Board, city staff, Greenville Restaurants, and our sponsors, all collectively made the decision to go big. We wanted to be back on the street, and the participants said it too. What is, um, go, next slide? Go big, um, our 40th year, uh, of the festival. What an incredible, it may be one of the longest-running festivals in the state. We had 45 restaurants. We had over 250 food items. I think we should do a contest one year to see if somebody can taste each food item. Seven stages entertained 150,000, over 150,000 attendees. We had 1,500 volunteers representing 11 nonprofits. They came to serve the beverage that we all ate and drank. They sold the tickets, counted money, and numerous other tasks. We, next slide? We sold a record of 3 million taste tickets, um, that were used. Five, half a million dollars in revenue went directly back to the restaurants. This is a big weekend for restaurants. It's not only for them to be on the street, in their, in their restaurants, their brick and mortar, and it's marketing for them. So, money that goes directly back into those restaurants. Another record that we sold, we set this year was selling tickets to 31 different states. I think it may be the first time we've sold to Alaska. The word is getting out about Fall for Greenville. So, all of these states, we have participants that lived in those states when they bought the tickets and then traveled to Greenville. Next slide? Um, for years, Fall for Greenville, and really Greenville, South Carolina, has been our hidden secret. We know it, we love it, um, and we, but a lot of people across the country did not know about it. Six years ago, um, the, the Fall for Greenville Board and city staff started working with Jennifer Stillwell, Master of Marketing, and Taryn Shera, Master to, in, um, media engagement. And they've made a huge difference to this festival, probably the biggest, um, single, uh, investment to our festival, um, getting the word out, bringing people from all over the, the nation. This is a list of media that came this year per, uh, their invitation, and as you can see, the, the media represented is who we need here in Greenville. Real simple, New York Times, Bon Appetit, Gardening Gun, um, Chow Hound, to name a few. I mean, these people came, they tasted, they went to every restaurant, and they loved it. The things that, if you'll jump to the next slide, um, what they were saying, they were blown away. Isn't everybody that comes to Greenville, a couple of them have been to Greenville before, but not to Fall for Greenville. What they're saying is they love Greenville. What a great city, great organization of a festival, fantastic food, and we will be back on and on. Originally, we were going to bring their food to them, and they wanted to walk the streets. They loved it. And, um, that's, that's what, that's why we're doing it. That's what, why we're here for Fall for Greenville. The, uh, next slide? National media, over the weekend, we reached 2.8 million views. They introduced Greenville and Fall for Greenville to the world. They love writing about us. We'll still see the, the media that, um, has been here for the last six years. They're still writing about Fall for Greenville in Greenville. Next slide? Social media, this is our own social media, Fall for Greenville, Greenville Events, and interactive. Isn't it fun to see 1.8 million page views? I remember getting excited not that long ago when we get 10 million page views. So, it's incredible. We've come a very long way. Next slide? So, it's been 40 years, and from the very beginning, the reason Fall for Greenville exists is to introduce the public. Then it was even the Greenville public to downtown. Back in 1982, there was no reason to be downtown if you didn't work downtown. So, Fall for Greenville, there was people with great vision, Bob Bainbridge, the godfather of Fall for Greenville, and many other people pulled this festival together, you know, with one and a half blocks, and it's now grown, it probably as large as it can at this point. But this is why, and, um, the quote here from Jordan, that, from Mass General Store, that said, "The weekend felt like Black Friday or one of the other big Christmas." That's what it's about, bringing people down, eating great food, listening to the great music, and seeing the, the Greenville community that we love. So, I'll wrap up with next slide. I stand here because I'm the department head, but a lot of people put a lot of, um, time and energy into this festival. Almost every single, uh, department puts in lots of energy, lots of planning, and we couldn't do it without them. Parks and grounds and public works, wow, how they keep our streets clean, not only during the festival, but after the festival, and everybody goes home. And they're trying to clean when people are still hanging out on the street, a very difficult job. But the next morning, when you come down, you don't know that there was a festival here, and that is incredible. That doesn't happen in other communities. It happens very deliberate by some very dedicated people. Fire and public, fire and police, um, they're there to keep us safe, and very, um, a tough job. You know, we're doing a lot of eating and drinking on the streets, there's a lot of people having a fun time, and they have to put up with it. But they do it with grace, and, um, we couldn't do it without them. Communications, GIS, and ED, they add the special touches that make our event great as it is. And the, another final note is, most of you know that this was my 35th, um, festival. I started very young. My takeaway for doing so many festivals is I've seen a lot of faces, um, from elected officials and leadership. Only one's been here with me the whole time, but. But the consistency has been, the faces may change, but the support has been there. We could not do the festivals that we do or the event. We could not do the festivals that we do or the events that we do without your support and leadership and the other department heads. I talk to my peers, they don't have, I just, I laugh at the things, the pain that they go through, because they haven't had consistent support from elected officials. So, I got to say, thank you. While Fall for Greenville is not a city-owned event, we own it. We do. So, thank you. And then, it's hard not to name names when you're up here talking about a festival that, you know, 800-some people work at. But I would be negligible to not name Tara Aker and Will Young. They pulled this festival off in a very difficult year and a half, and they have an incredible team. We've been lucky over the years to have incredible teams. But this year was unlike every year in my past 35 years. And we've all had difficulties, the event business, we had to recreate everything that we did. We had to convince restaurants and sponsors and the public that we were going to do it safe, and we did. So, I've got to thank them, and I'm proud of our outdoor events, I'm proud of Fall for Greenville. It was a record year, record cash, record people, and we'll be back doing it again next year.
We're going to give you a big hand of applause, but I'm going to tell you something. It is truly the gold standard in festivals, and the gold standard for Greenville, South Carolina, and downtown, and just like Artisphere. The thing I most admire about Angie and the crew is that they never rest on their laurels, the continuing improvement by being self-critical. I mean, nobody's more critical. Anything you didn't say that worked right at Fall for Greenville, they already saw it, and they dissected it and decided we can change that next year. And that ability to say, "Yeah, it's not perfect," there's never something that's perfect enough, and yet, that's why it's such an incredible festival. It's clean and safe, and just never ceases to amaze. But we so much appreciate that aspect, and Angie, you have been part of this for 35 years, and that makes a huge difference, too.
Well, and if you don't mind, Mayor, a couple of comments. You did mention the historic rainfall we had on Friday afternoon that washed the scaffolding down the Reedy River. And also, something that really struck me is, I was walking past City Hall, the staff, Angie's staff had put up a big sign across the City Hall thing that said, "Angie Prosser Headquarters."
Yes.
And to me, that was so cool, because that shows what respect and how engaged your team is, and that's just really very special.
Yeah, in fact, the Angie Prosser Headquarters, I found out, we got to have us a little place out there, because I found out it was the greatest place to eat downtown town. So, I'm just saying, there's some stuff about that. The other thing is, Fall for Greenville should be always included in our economic development advertisement. Never be left. It is an economic tool for the city.
It really is.
It needs to be included. It is an economic development tool. We need to make sure we never forget that.
Yep.
Real quick.
Okay.
I said this two weeks ago, but you weren't here to hear it. You guys did a fantastic job on this festival. I was, went down there, it was so well-organized, there was so much going on. I mean, I did not, I did not expect it to be as good as you guys made it. And kudos to all of you, kudos to everybody on the staff, kudos to the manager on down, chiefs, both of you guys. I mean, everybody did a fantastic job. It just, like I say, I was astounded by how well the job you guys did.
And when you can fill him up, God, you're good.
Yes.
But it absolutely ruins you when you go to other festivals. I mean, you would be quite the critic when you see the others. All right, Mr. Manager, anything else?
Say, my number-one job during Fall for Greenville that I learned when I first got here two years ago is, just get out of the way.
Get out of the way.
I'm going to get run over, right? That's all. Thank you all for tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you.